It's about 10:05. Let's get started. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for participating in today's meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board meeting. The first thing on the agenda this morning is a public hearing. This public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and has been held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and district regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing has been held by video teleconference due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Instructions on making statements by video teleconference have been distributed. All statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become a part of the hearing record. And I'd just like to just add a few comments before we begin. I want to make a comment that this public comment process is a way for you, the public, to raise any issues, questions that you may have regarding the agreed board orders that we will handle today. Your vote is important to the board, and we wish to have your comments, if any, and all your comments will be part of the official record. Thank you. We have two agreed board orders. Mr. Gravetti, will you present the two agreed board orders today?
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. The district brings for the board's consideration two agreements, one with Kelly Construction, Inc., and the second with the Al J Schnider Company. The companies have agreed to the terms of the orders. Kelly Construction, Inc. served as the general contractor on the renovation of the Galt House Hotel, which is owned by the Al J Schnider Company. The district alleges that Kelly Construction, Inc. and the Al J Schnider Company failed to perform a thorough inspection for asbestos prior to beginning renovation activities, failed to notify the district prior to beginning renovation activities, and did not follow work practice standards to prevent the asbestos-containing materials from becoming friable at the start of the Galt House Hotel renovation project as required by asbestos regulations. On December 12, 2018, the district received a notification for an asbestos abatement project at the hotel. The notification stated that on December 6, 2018, an asbestos abatement company had taken samples of suspected asbestos-containing material that had already been removed during the renovation and which subsequently tested positive for asbestos. On December 13, 2018, district compliance officers performed an inspection at the hotel and observed approximately 1,200 square feet of floor tile and wood paneling with asbestos-containing mastic had been removed. After the initial samples showed the asbestos-containing materials were present, Kelly Construction, Inc. and the Al J Schnider Company contracted a licensed asbestos abatement contractor to clean up the previously disturbed asbestos-containing materials in accordance with asbestos regulations. Since then, the asbestos abatement contractor has surveyed additional hotel areas of the hotel prior to renovation activities, and when asbestos was found, notified the district and has been permitted to abate the asbestos-containing materials using applicable work standards. The companies have each agreed to pay penalties of $11,475 to resolve these notices of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the orders as proposed.
Okay. Mrs. Hampton, has a representative of Kelly Construction or Al J Schnatter registered to make a statement regarding this agreed board order?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Has any member of the public registered to make a statement? Anyone from the public, please raise your hand by teleconference, and you will be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants list. Please raise your hand by teleconference. This is a feature you can find on the bottom of your screen or by pressing star three if joining by phone, and you will be called upon.
Andy, can you confirm that, please?
I do not see any raised hands either in the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board members?
Not for me.
Okay. I just have one quick question. It seems like they did the survey first, then they found out later on that the material contained asbestos. Is that correct?
So they started the project, and then when they had removed some of the floor tile and wall tile, one of the people on the job noticed that it looked like the mastic behind the tiles may be asbestos-containing materials. Then they did the survey, and the survey came back with results that said that material was asbestos. The NESHAP, the federal regulations for asbestos, we call it the NESHAP, it requires a survey prior to even starting on the project. So one of their violations was not doing a survey prior to beginning construction. So pulling the first tile without a survey done was a violation.
Okay. One other question, I don't know if it's relevant or not. It seems like, I recall, most of estates have what they refer to as asbestos abatement or certification company. Was Kelly Construction, or are they certified to remove asbestos, do you know?
Kelly is not. They contracted with a licensed contractor to clean up and to do the abatement after they realized there was asbestos on the project.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any board members?
No.
Thank you. There have been no further statements or questions. This public hearing is adjourned. I will now call the regular meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak, we are conducting the monthly office board meeting today by video teleconference. Now I will conduct a roll call of all board members that are present on this teleconference. When I call your name, please say yes. Mr. Steve Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Coburn?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Candace White?
Chairman Hilton, Ms. White has joined the meeting. Andy is trying to elevate her. We're having a little bit of trouble. She is in the attendee list and present.
Okay. What about Heather Allen?
I do not see Heather.
Candace should be able to speak now. I am still working on adding her to the panelist list.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you.
I do need to see Candace on video.
We're in the process of trying to add. We're having a little...
I need four members by video, so if Candace can attend by video. Right now, we've lost Dr. Coburn by video. We can hear him. We do not have him by video.
So in other words, we cannot vote?
Cannot vote unless we have four members that can be seen and heard.
You can hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you. You have low...
Yeah, I've tried fiddling with that. What I see on the little thumbnail picture of myself is just a frozen picture since I logged on. Okay. I don't know what I could do.
Let's see if we can get Candace by video.
Well, I think what we'll do...
I am not seeing Candace in the list any longer. I clicked on make panelist. She disappeared from the list, but she has not appeared in the panelist list, so I don't know if she was disconnected.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It disconnected me and reconnected me. So I might have to hang up and then go into the app in order for it to reconnect.
Okay.
Okay.
We can move on before we go to the vote on the two agreed board orders. Are there any introductions today?
No, Chairman Hilton.
Okay. What about public recognitions?
Yes, if you don't mind, I would like to make a public recognition. And this one is a little bittersweet for me, but it is upon me to announce that Tom Nor will be retiring from the district. For those who don't know, and for me personally, Tom has been a confidant. He has been someone who has always spoken the truth to me. He has been a, just an incredible supporter of the district and the work that we do. And he will definitely be missed. He has always brought a voice of reason, and he has also always tried to bring the voice of the community to make sure that what we were communicating was going to be of benefit and be understood and provide clarity to the community. And so we will do our best to replace the position, but we will certainly not be able to replace Mr. Nor and what he brought to the work that we do here at the district. And I just want to wish him the best in his next stage of life and to thank him from the bottom of my heart for all that he has brought to the district and brought to me personally and professionally.
Oh, thank you. On behalf of the board, I wish, I'd like to wish Tommy a happy retirement, and this is a new phase in your life, so enjoy life, and I'm sure you will be missed by all your friends and colleagues at the district. Thank you, Mr. Tally. Any other public recognitions? Was that, is that it?
No, that is all.
That's all. Thank you. Next, we move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes of the regular board meeting held on July 15, 2020 were distributed electronically for your review. Are there any changes to the minutes by board member, by board members?
Not for me.
No.
Okay. None. The minutes of the July 15, 2020 meeting minutes are approved with no corrections. Moving on to public comment. Mrs. Hampton, has there anyone from the public registered to make a comment? Mrs. Hampton?
Chairman Hilton, I apologize. I lost the sound. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Oh.
Thank you.
The minutes are approved with no corrections. If someone from the public registered to make a comment, Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes, Chairman Hilton. This morning, we have two citizens who would like to make comment, Andrew Schaflin and Sandy Griffith.
Okay.
They are unmuted, so Mr. Schaflin, you'd like to begin your statement?
Well, Sandy Griffith is going to go first, if that's... Hi, Rachel.
Good morning.
Shall I begin? Yes. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sandy Griffith. I moved to Franklin Street. I'm T P six. I began to notice a gray gritty substance coating everything on my property. I was disturbed by nothing in it, just tossed it off my glass pad table and scrubbed off. Contacted APCD, and I was told it was pollen. I was assured not to worry. As more time went on, I couldn't think of anything gray and gritty in nature, pollen is yellow and silky. So I contacted APCD. Few people were there, Ryan, a field tech, and Hannah, a lab tech, come to my house and take samples. And Hannah put a plate on the floor and showed us the group that accumulated there, and that it was proved to be a advanced ready mix. I stopped growing vegetables. I did reach out to advance. They are my neighbors, after all, and I was not interested in denying their right to exist. I spoke with Roger Lazley, manager of Camilla Schroder's Advanced Ready Mix. He was very friendly, quite understanding, and very willing to help. But as you know, actions speak louder than words, and their continued citations from the 90s until now screams reality. Ryan, along with Nick Hart, got Camilla Schroder's Advanced Ready Mix to sign a dust reduction contract. Ryan was also excited about all the places that they had allowed him to take samples, so easy to make a comparison analysis later. He also got them to repair the fly ash silo that was profusely leaking. I believe fly ash is a carcinogen. I'm not totally sure, but I believe it is. It did get better after that, off and on. Then we get a new mayor. Ryan, educated environmental studies, lost his job. He was upset because experienced field techs were replaced by people who weren't. Hannah lost her job as well. The lab is closed and has never been reopened. I guess if you don't want to hold repeat offenders accountable, eliminating the only real proof, sample-taking, would be an excellent way to achieve that. So far, it has, as evidenced by Camilla Schroder's continued abuse of metro citizens. So Advanced Ready Mix, a multimillion-dollar company, has adversely affected the health and well-being of everyone north, south, east, and west of their 820 Water Street property. So going to an event at the Big Four Bridge? Hope the wind isn't blowing your way. Skate park, same. How about the folks living east of Campbell along Water Street? They get blasted. I've witnessed it. And felt relief it wasn't blowing my way. Sad to me. It's not like I don't care about my neighbors. I've described these issues repeatedly with APCD. It wasn't until my neighbor generously gave me his old iPhone, which, by the way, I had a $70 phone. My soul has been sucked out by having iPhones, and that was just not fun for me. But I am partially believed now. I say partially because I've already been told that video won't be enough evidence. The most frustrating part is APCD's kindness toward Camilla Schroder. Offering deals to a new offender, sure, please do, but a repeat offender like Camilla Schroder's Advanced Ready Mix has citations going back to the 90s? The latest fine is March 21 of this year. Had 35 days and counting of ignoring APCD. They were assessed a whopping $3,750, and it was still going on after the 35 days, by the way. Rachel Hamilton expressed not going to court to save taxpayer dollars. I prefer saving taxpayer health. My glands shouldn't swell when Advanced Ready Mix has an active day. I shouldn't have to strategically place a flag in my yard so I can close my windows when I'm getting a cool northwesterly breeze. I'm also a cleaning lady, and I don't need more furniture to dust. So I will be filming all the time, and sadly, I'm kind of confident that I'll probably be meeting you all again. And thank you so much for this forum. It's very kind of you to volunteer. I didn't even know you existed until recently. So peace and well-being to all of you, especially you running around as the nurse there with the mask, or doctor, right? Peace.
This is Andrew speaking. I'm ready to speak if it's appropriate. All right. My name is Andrew Schaflin. I've lived on Franklin Street for about two years. Shortly after moving in, Sandy, my neighbor, made me aware of Advanced Ready Mix just on the other side of the flood wall from us. She gave me the number to report them on the occasions when I'd wake up and find my car, street, and yard covered in gray dust. Last month, I was excited when Sandy told me she had an appointment with three people from APCD, including Director Keith Tally, so they could see the increasingly shabby conditions of Water Street and the advanced property. We met on Shelby Street and began walking around. Sandy pointed to a pile of sludge and said, "Look at all this fly ash clogging the sewer grate." An APCD employee replied, "Well, we can't be sure if that's fly ash." That prompted me to ask, "How can we test to see what it is?" The response was, "Well, we actually don't have the ability to test materials anymore." I asked, "Is there anyone in the city who could come take samples and have it analyzed?" There were unsure glances between Keith and the other employees, and someone replied, "I think someone from the health department might be able to do that." Frustrated, I asked, "So where could I take samples of debris that we collect ourselves to have analyzed?" The response, "Well, material evidence would need to be collected by APCD staff to be official." So let's recap. There's waste material all over our homes and streets. APCD can't analyze what that material is, including if it contains hazardous chemicals. Citizens can't collect the material because it's only official when APCD observes and collects it. So I'm just asking, where do we go from here? I have a degree in geography focusing on environmental analysis. I know the first step to addressing any environmental issue is clear, concrete analysis of the materials purported to be affecting the environment and the people around it. My husband and I have three-month-old twins. What happens when these kiddos become mobile next summer and start crawling around our backyard? We have had years of airborne debris dropped into the yard. How can we know what the effects would be if we don't know what chemicals are in the soil? In addition to holding Advanced Ready Mix concrete to their responsibilities and commitments keeping our streets and their property in compliance with regulation, I'm just asking the board to investigate why it's not possible to have potentially hazardous materials analyzed. Thank you so much.
Chairman Hilton, you're on mute.
I guess you've been on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just want to again thank Andrew and Sandy for your comments. Please keep the APCD apprised of the situation. Are there any next steps, Mrs. Hamilton, that you want to address?
If Mr. Gravetti can provide an update for the board, that would be the time now to do it. Andy, if you could elevate Steve again?
Okay. Okay, very good. Are there any other comments, Mrs. Hamilton, today?
None of them that I'm aware of.
Moving along, there's no...
Well, we can't hear from Steve.
Let's wait for Steve to join in just a minute.
Can you all hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the community compliance group has been doing weekly surveillance in the area, taking pictures of places where Advance needs to do a little more housekeeping. We issued a notice of violation, and today is the day that they were given to contact us. We'll be working with Advance to try to resolve the issues that were deficiencies in their record-keeping and housekeeping for dust control purposes. And industrial compliance is trying to meet out there and observe some of the things that Sandy and Andrew have told us about and observe them ourselves.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you. Just keep the board apprised of the situation. Sometimes in the next couple of two or three months, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll just move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business for today. Stacy, I guess the agreed board orders with these two companies, we will have to...
We're good. We've got Candace. Hi, Candace.
Is she on?
She's on, and I can see her, so we're good.
Okay. New business. The agreed board orders with Kelly Construction Incorporated and Al J Schnatter Company. Is there a motion from the board to adopt the agreed board orders?
I'll make that motion.
Is that Steve?
I'll second that motion, Miss Candace.
Candace, thank you. So it's been second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the agreed board orders are adopted and approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. I don't think we have any committee reports today, do we, Miss Hamilton? Staff report, Mr. Tally?
Thank you, Chairman Hilton. Good morning to all. You know, as always, I want to thank the board members for their participation via this virtual format. I look forward to the opportunity for us to begin to conduct in-person meetings again in our newly renovated Edison Room, which I am happy to announce has much improved acoustics, so we can all look forward to that. First off, Assistant Director Hamilton, I think, provided a link to a recently published WFPL article by Ryan Van Velser. In summary, the article highlighted that Louisville Metro has officially met the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for sulfur dioxide. This, of course, pertained to a partial non-attainment designation for a small portion of Jefferson County near LG&E's Mill Creek Electric Power Plant. Most of you know the backstory related to LG&E's $1 billion investment in additional pollution controls at that facility, which significantly lowered SO2 emissions. The article also discussed our community's long and ongoing battle with ozone. It discussed the multi-pollutant stakeholder group process and the final report, which we will be, which will be discussed a little more detail later in this report. I want to point out that Michelle King did an excellent job walking Ryan through this discussion and answering his questions. She discussed some of the recommendations that have come out in the report, the complicated process of ozone formation, the health impacts, and how some of these health impacts have a disproportionate impact on some of our neighbors. So I hope everyone has the opportunity to take a look at that article. And the article ended on a very important quote from Michelle that I feel we should all take to heart. She said, and I quote, "Air quality is something we all, we all own. It goes from government and large industry all the way down to residents to really own air quality and understand why it's so important." And going forward, I just think that that quote was so apropos because it will take all of us from top to bottom to address the issues, the air quality issues that face our community. So I just hope everyone gets the opportunity to read that article and take that message to heart. On August 11, the district held a public hearing on a pending permit application by Clarence Corporation. It was hosted by Board Chair Carl Hilton. As part of the hearing, Permitting Supervisor Karen Thorne provided an excellent summary of the project. She utilized several PowerPoint slides and charts, which provided outstanding clarity and explanation. It is this type, and this is what I want to point out, it is this type of informative, transparent, and plain language summary that the district strives for to improve public understanding and then allow their opportunity to have meaningful input. And so that's something we just want to continue with. Karen did a great job of putting that together. It was one of the better explanations in terms of breaking that information down so that it could be used effectively by the community. The next topic is one that I feel is important to keep the board apprised of. The district has been taking part in meetings with and will continue to meet with MSD, the Metropolitan Sewer District, as they work to meet the compliance requirements of their NOV. This is an important issue community-wide, but it is also one that the district sees as an environmental justice issue. I want to point out that the district is not the lead on this meeting, on these meetings. That is MSD's responsibility. But the importance of this as an equity issue and an environmental justice issue warrants our participation. While, as always, we would like to see these efforts move forward more quickly, we are pleased with the direction and the tone of these discussions and the commitment that MSD has demonstrated so far. My plan is to keep the board informed as we move forward, and at the appropriate time, when a definitive plan and compliance plan is put into place, I will request that MSD appear before the board to provide their own update of the compliance efforts they have developed to satisfy the NOV. And you know as well as I do that every cause needs a champion, and this one is no different. Assistant Director Hamilton, along with our Compliance and Enforcement Section, have been focused and diligent in their effort, and I would simply be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work that they have put in to bring us to this point in terms of addressing these issues with MSD. Our entire staff, as appropriate, continues to take advantage of training, learning, and engagement opportunities across a wide spectrum of topics. We are continuing with the series put on by Marama, which is the Mid-Atlantic... which is the Mid-Atlantic Regional Air Management Association. The most recent webinar was on particulate matter modeling and control programs. The previous webinar to that one was on ozone formation, health effects, and US ambient standards. This series has been really informative and timely in terms of topic. Likewise, we've continued our participation in the ELI workshops, which is the Environmental Law Institute, on citizen science and air monitoring programs. Again, just really informative opportunity to talk about what's going on in this arena across the country. We discuss best practices, opportunities for community science, and importantly, concerns that we have that we conduct that citizen science in a way that is productive and meaningful for the citizens of our community and don't provide additional frustrations for the folks that get involved. We are also planning our participation in some title five operating permit training for our permitting staff that's coming up here soon. And then lastly on this topic, I simply want to point out the outstanding job our managers and supervisors are doing while we are teleworking, providing training and learning opportunities to the staff. In some respects, this telework has enhanced our commitment in this area, which we hope will certainly bear fruit in the future. I want to point out that I had the opportunity to take place in a meeting with the mayor and this was a meeting that he called with the minority leadership within metro government. In this meeting, he asked that we talk about those things that we feel are equity issues within metro government for us as minority members of metro government, but then also to talk about and provide our comments relative to the work that the administration is doing and that he is doing. He asked for our honest comments about what we thought that he had done well and more importantly, he asked us to honestly comment on those things that we thought were not handled as best that they could be. And so there are plans for continued meetings with the minority leadership within metro government. And I point this out simply that we have had that opportunity to be involved. I think it's important for folks to know that, at least at this point, I feel like our voices are being heard. We're offering comments and honest commentary about things that can be done within metro government and then also in terms of what we as minority members of this community feel like need to be done outside of metro government. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware that we were having this opportunity and that I was taking part in it. That also leads to an additional statement that I would like to make in regards to what's going on in our community, environmental justice, and equity in general. And that is that we are at a pivotal point, a transition point in our community and in fact, in the world. The demand for equity has never been louder. The work that we do at the district is impacted by these events and can play its own part, and we can play our own part in addressing some of these issues and bringing the change that is being demanded and is in fact, long overdue. These are issues that are not new to the district. Environmental justice issues and are equity issues and have long been on our plate. Ever since I accepted the position of Director at the Air Pollution Control District, I have been acutely aware of these issues. Partly because I am black and I grew up in West Louisville and partly because regardless of the color of your skin, right is right. I know how hard it is to affect change. Quite frankly, the system is structured to make that change, to make change that is needed hard. It is designed to preserve the status quo. I'm using this forum to say these things because it will require a broad-based commitment to bring real change and lasting change. It will require not just my voice, not just the voice of the district or the voice of the board. We have to find a way to make this a community-wide agenda. Not just black folks, not just government. It has to be all of Louisville. We have an opportunity to show a way forward if we simply have the courage and the commitment to do what we can do. My fear is that if we don't take advantage of this window of opportunity to make really meaningful change, we will allow the deaths and the protests that were spurred by those deaths to be in vain. That we will make speeches and plans that sound good and look good on paper, but never come to fruition. That is my fear. My concern is that this is an incredibly large systemic, historically-based, and complex problem. My concern is that from a resource standpoint, we will not be able to do everything that needs to be done right away. And in that, in many cases, it will take time to begin to see the type of tangible results that the community is expecting. And quite frankly, the community has run out of patience. Having said this, what I think we need to do is to provide real community participation and engagement. We must make sure those most impacted must be a part of the planning, implementation, and yes, and the accountability of any change that we attempt to make. Government must be completely transparent. We must be transparent with the good news. We must be transparent with the bad news. And we must be prepared to make tough and sometimes unpopular decisions. We must be clear about how long it will take and what will have to be given up, what sacrifices will have to be made in order for us to do the right thing. We have to prioritize what needs to be done first based on the resources available and then make that happen. And then we need to have a real plan to develop the resources to address those priorities we cannot do right away and we must provide a realistic timetable to do so. And we have to put all of this in place in a plan that will stand the test of time and not be easily derailed by future leaders with, let's say, a different vision. There is opportunity, opportunity to do the right thing, to do a good thing, and we cannot be afraid of it. We must embrace it and not wilt and wither under the difficulty of the work that lies ahead. This is what lies before the district and it is incumbent upon me to bring this before the board in preparation for the work that must be done. We need the board's guidance, experience, support, and input in order for the district to be as successful as possible in these endeavors. This will not be the last time Chairman Hilton that I bring this message to you. If we do this thing right, it will become part of the work we do every day and it will get discussed and be a part of our regular day-to-day work. And so I feel incumbent, as I have in the last couple of board meetings, to kind of set the stage for the work that is ahead of us. I wanted to be honest about the fact that this is not going to be easy work. It is going to be work that everybody's not going to be happy with, but it's work that needs to be done. And we will need the board's support and input in order to move forward with this. And so as these opportunities come before us, I say these things in preparation for those opportunities. And so as part of that work of environmental justice and the work we need to do in the community, the work that has been done with the multi-pollutant stakeholder group is really just a small piece of that work, but it impacts directly the type of thing that we just discussed. And so I would like to bring Michelle King on to provide an update on the final report that was issued and then discuss a little bit about the next steps. Michelle?
Thank you, Director Tally. I'm going to share some of my screen here so that I can walk through a presentation with you all. The goal of this presentation is to highlight some of the largest sections of the report. By no means a summary of the report itself because there is just so much content there, but I'm hopeful that this will kind of give an idea of what the contents of that report are as well as the driving motivation for the district to convene this group and produce this report. So with that, I'll just start by saying that when we have faced air quality challenges, as Louisville has many times through its history, the district has a long tradition of starting conversations about how we can meet those challenges, whether those be non-attainment that we are right now with our ozone standard, the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, or a huge concern around air toxics, like the process that drove the development of this power program, Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program. We bring people together at the table and have that conversation and start with what are the recommendations that those stakeholders bring to us. So that was our driving motivation with convening the multi-pollutant stakeholder group. And throughout this presentation, you'll hear me refer to that as MPSG. It's a mouthful, so MPSG makes it a little bit easier to speak. I believe that we presented these goals before the board before when we started this process back in late 2019. But I did just want to put them up there as a reminder. These are the goals that were presented to the entire stakeholder group. They were discussed with the group and the opportunity to provide these goals was given. These are the goals that we worked and moved forward throughout this process with. As you can see, the overarching goal is to develop recommendations to reduce emissions. That's both of ozone precursors, so volatile organic carbon, VOCs, and NOx, nitrogen oxides. So those are those precursors of ozone. So ozone as a pollutant is already a multi-pollutant conversation because there's those precursor emissions that we need to really focus on. But at the same time, we wanted to make sure that this conversation recognized that there are many strategies that produce emission benefits for other pollutants that our community has goals for, even if we are not non-attainment at this moment. So things like continued reductions of fine particulates. We've seen great reductions over recent years for that pollutant, but we know that we want to continue to see lower and lower amounts and concentrations of fine particulates in our air for the benefit of health. And of course, air toxics, something that we want to continue to focus on our efforts to reduce those emissions and exposures that our community experiences. So we hope that through this process, we will find some quantifiable emission reduction strategies. There are some strategies in here that could be developed at some point where we can quantify those and they might be useful in a regulatory setting such as a submittal to our safe implementation plan where those become thoroughly applicable under our plan to attain and then maintain the Ozone National Ambient Air Quality Standard. But many of the goals or the recommendations that were produced really fell into voluntary programs and community initiatives. But those are incredibly important. The voluntary actions by our regulated community as well as by us as individuals and our choices are all important pieces to an air quality management strategy. So just because there weren't as many that we could put a number on doesn't mean that these aren't important recommendations that we need to continue to develop and implement. But we also wanted to look at strategies that could reduce exposures and the health risks that come with those. So we had a committee that just talked about health, for example. And we'll get a little bit further into those committees as we go. We also wanted to talk to our stakeholders to ask for recommendations about ways that we can raise awareness and understanding of air quality and what those health impacts are. Really understanding why air quality is so important is important support for the initiatives and strategies that we could place to reduce emissions. So the MPSG process, just as a quick reminder, we convened at the end of 2019, three times, representatives from 36 entities and organizations. And that included stakeholders from our largest regulated sources all the way through to industry sector representatives, for example, someone from the Pink Council to represent some of those much smaller sources, but that there are numerous of those sources in our community. But it also included community groups, health advocacy organizations, housing advocacy organizations. So we wanted to really get a broad representation in this conversation and our stakeholders did not disappoint. They came to the table and they were permitted to this conversation. And it was an in-depth conversation in those first three meetings. The process was led internally, the development of the information and the presentation of that by a team of APCD staff, the MPSG team, as I like to refer to them, and that included Byron Gary, Jamie Champa for everything, and Torin Collin. And that was just really a powerhouse team. So I have to continue to give them credit for the process from start all the way through to the development of this final report. I also like to recognize two of our board members who provided leadership and support and encouragement for this group and for this process throughout and including all through the committee meetings as well. So Steve Sullivan and Dr., excuse me, I realize I have a terrible misprint on my slide. That's Dr. Jeffrey Coburn and Steve Sullivan, who were our co-chairs for that group. And I will get that corrected before we post this to our website. I apologize, Dr. Coburn. So they stepped with us and helped us lead this large group through a really in-depth conversation of everything from air quality and our attainment status all the way through the ozone formation study, which I know was presented to the board. And you all have a good understanding of how in-depth and technical that information is and our stakeholders who stepped with us throughout that. APCD on its part to help facilitate that process built out a webpage for this group. It included background information, all of the meeting materials, and an emissions inventory dashboard that Byron Gary was able to put together for us. And that includes data from the National Emissions Inventory for our entire MSA, our metropolitan statistical area. So that's not just Jefferson County, that's several counties surrounding us and that includes sources that are in our non-attainment area. And with its latest update, that emissions inventory dashboard, which is still available and will continue to be available on our website, includes data from the 2011 NEI, 2014 NEI, and now the 2017 NEI, which was just released last spring. It's a really helpful resource. I encourage folks to check that out. The link there on the page to that larger multi-pollutant stakeholder group, if you go back to this PowerPoint, that emissions inventory dashboard and which is also a hyperlink for directly going to the dashboard. So after those three convenings, our next step was to break out into committees to focus on different aspects of the goals for this process. We wanted to encourage our stakeholders to participate in as many committees as they would like and bring in others from their organizations as well as to spread this information through our network and bring in additional participants into this committee process. And with that, we ended up with more than 60 participants among our five committees. Those five committees were broken out by the different source sectors for emissions. So point sources, those large stationary sources, those regulated by the district. There are area sources, which are also regulated by the district, but they are typically smaller sources that are, there are many of across our community. So a good example of an area source might be a printer or a dry cleaner. Individually, those are small sources, but collectively, they can really add up in emissions inventory. And then, of course, mobile sources, which we're all a part of as we move throughout our city in different ways. But also because we wanted to talk about how to raise awareness and make sure that APCD is providing as much information to our community and to that wide range of stakeholders, we need an outreach and education committee. And then we also wanted to talk about health. And we felt like that there would be some strategies to reduce health risks by reducing exposure and increasing awareness of how individuals can do that and our understanding of health impacts. We really wanted a committee that could focus on that because it didn't really fit into conversations at hand in other four committees. So those committee meetings were, again, facilitated by that MPSG team and they did a great job because through mid-December to mid-March, those committees met 37 different times and amongst them developed more than 90 recommendations. So this is a really large body of work and I can't thank our stakeholders enough for their commitment to this process because there was really robust participation throughout those meetings. After the end of the committee process, we brought everybody back. After the end of the committee process, we brought everybody back together. That meant all of those stakeholders that we invited in the beginning and everyone that participated in any of the committees were, we brought everyone back. Of course, this was early April. And as you all know, we all started experiencing a new way of doing business about mid-March. And so these were WebEx meetings. Luckily, we had been providing WebEx links to meetings since the beginning of this process. So that wasn't too big of a shift for our stakeholders. There was something we were going to address. So we, sorry, I heard a question. So we brought everybody back together virtually. And we have really excellent participation through that. We had 50 to 60 attendees at each of our two reconvenings. Each of those reconvenings was an opportunity for the staff to present the work and the recommendations of each of the five committees. And what we did after each of those was we sent a form out to everybody in this group and asked them to prioritize within each of those committees the top recommendations that they think should go to the head of the line. And this is not to say that recommendations that didn't get prioritized won't be pursued. But we recognize that often these recommendations have competing resources and we simply can't pursue them all at once. So we really wanted to hear from our stakeholders which of those they felt we should put to the front of the line so it's good. We got really good responses back from that. We also asked them and provided opportunity through this form to give us free-form feedback on these recommendations. That gave people who weren't part of a committee to give us some additional ideas on recommendations that maybe occurred to them that didn't come up in the committee discussion or to reinforce the committee's work as well. And all of that went together into the final stage of this process at hand, which was the development of the final report. And that was just released weeks ago and is available on our website. This is a large body of work. I commend enough the MPSG teams for the work that they put into this. It is a comprehensive resource on air quality. It is not only a record of the process and discussion and recommendation development, although that is a really important part of this report. I just wanted to underline for folks that this is something you can come back to if you have questions on Louisville's air quality, particularly those areas that we had to do some work around. So those areas where we had non-attainment or our air toxics. So this documents also all the recommendations and the feedback received. So just hitting on a few of the highlights, there are additional sections of this report that are not really reviewing here, but it includes everything from a brief history of the district through the basic overviews of air quality and what these pollutants are and into a deeper dive of what are our trends and status with the pollutants that we've been challenged with here in Louisville. So those include all the criteria pollutants for which we have been in the past or are currently designated non-attainment. We also have an entire section that's an ozone deeper dive that is really in-depth look at ozone formation and what we learned from the ozone formation study. And we also review our air toxics status with trends and coal emissions and risk and how the STAR program works. So again, really good resource for our community about air quality. And it's very specific to Louisville. So just to go through a few example recommendations from each of the committees. This is by no means all of these recommendations. Again, there were over 90 of them, but I just wanted to highlight a few. These are all recommendations that were noted as priorities through the feedback survey. So some of these recommendations are specific to the district. Some of them are specific to Louisville Metro Government as a whole or to our sources or other partners in the community. So for those recommendations that aren't for APCD to carry forth and implement, we do, we are committed to taking those to the appropriate groups and educating on behalf of the stakeholders that those recommendations are seen and acted upon. And of course, we will support that work in any way with this report. So one example of voluntary effort that came out of this program was the recommendation that we would recognize companies for voluntary efforts to reduce ozone precursors and other emissions. Because these recognition group programs that we developed at the district would be awarded before the board and have that opportunity to public recognition through the board meeting process. Also, this group encouraged us to ask point sources to have air quality alert day action plans. And recommended, and this is a recommendation for the sources, that those sources develop their own individual action plans for those air quality alert days and voluntarily commit to actions that would reduce their facility's emissions. And that could be everything from maintenance that might be scheduled to their facility ground sweeping and not mowing on those days. That's a wide variety. And we know that each facility knows best those things that they can commit to doing on those days. That would be an example, by the way, of the type of voluntary action that we would like to recognize in that first recommendation. The area source committee, their conversation had some similarities to the point source committee. There's a lot of similarities between those sources. But they also recognized the importance of this outreach and education district can do to these smaller sources that may not have in-house environmental staff and experts that can help them find opportunities for mission reduction. I believe our small business compliance assistance program will be integral to this. And Jamie Chanka, our coordinator for that program, led this committee's conversation. Not all of these sources that are the subject of this recommendation would necessarily be small businesses, but many small businesses would fit into this and would benefit from the recommendation, which is for APCD to encourage work practice changes, material changes, equipment, technology, et cetera. It could help reduce emissions from these area sources. So an example might be switching to a different type of ride cleaning solver in order to reduce VOCs from an operation. We recognize that that takes some outreach and education to those sectors. And also that many times those individual companies may have some financial concerns. And so the recommendation went on to include that we keep our watch out for identifying funding opportunities for that. And that's something that we've been talking to our peers at the Health Department about as well and how they can find opportunities and help us make those connections through their work with businesses throughout the community. The mobile source committee, really robust conversation here. They actually met the most of any of our committees and went through many different documents to develop recommendations for mobile source emission reductions. I wanted to highlight the expand electric vehicle adoption and REV infrastructure. There were nine sub-recommendations under that. A great deal of conversation into how can we here in Louisville encourage the adoption of electric vehicles, both by individuals as well as large fleets, such as Metro Government's own fleet? And how can we encourage that by expanding the available charging infrastructure? That can be a barrier to investing in electric vehicles. So there are several recommendations about how to expand that. And that's something that would be an APCD-driven goal, but would involve many departments across Louisville Metro Government. And we currently have the dry cleaning Louisville team, which APCD has been the lead on. But it is a cross-functional system with Advanced Planning and Sustainability, as well as the Parking Authority and Civic Innovation. So we have some really good partners there. And we'll just encourage that group to take these recommendations and see how that might help their work forward as well. Also, for Louisville Metro Government is evaluating parking requirements and how that might encourage some different mobile source emission reduction strategies, such as improved transit use, again, availability of EV charging infrastructure and ride share. So there were a number of sub-recommendations there. And there were a number of recommendations that went specifically to revisions to the Louisville Development Code. So again, we'll be working with our partners over in development to see how we can support their work to carry forth implementation of those recommendations. Our health committee, again, this is where some interesting conversation that didn't really have a place in the other committees' work took place. And a good example of that is understanding that urban heat island mitigation strategies can improve air quality, such as vegetative solutions. So that may be a vegetative buffer or just additional greening that allows for cooling and reduced energy use around ozone season. That, again, is a recommendation for Louisville Metro Government as a whole. They also had a recommendation for the district to look at our air monitoring network and look for opportunities to expand that. That would include looking at information like the National Air Toxics Assessment Data to screening for areas of our city where there may be some air toxics hotspots, to use that term. We do know that there are census tracts that have elevated risk from air toxics, whether that be from point sources, area sources, or mobile sources, which are actually a very large driver of air toxicity exposure. But also around fine and ultrafine particulates. And then finally, our outreach and education committee, which this is a really fun group. It was such a broad, eclectic group of people from different organizations. And we made some really good connections with folks that I think will be able to help us carry our outreach and air quality awareness messaging further into our community through various their networks. They had some great recommendations, including working with local schools and libraries to try to get air quality and Louisville-specific air quality information into science curriculum for students. That's really just building on that awareness that is going to continue. Will be an area that needs to be mindful of air quality for many, many years to come. So let's start with our U in their understanding of the importance of air quality. They also volunteered themselves to keep coming to the table. So that was a really great thing for us here. So they recommended that we continue to convene that outreach and education committee to keep getting feedback and their ideas on how they can help us with our outreach and education efforts. And then, again, I wanted to highlight a recommendation that would directly affect the board. They recommended developing a request for proposals, RFE process, for the board's air quality trust fund. It would increase awareness of the trust fund, so perhaps drive some funding to be posited there. It's, that fund is simply voluntary donations that go into the fund for a very specific uses by the board. And, for example, you all have approved in the past a charging, electric vehicle charging station at the Humpy House in Portland. And a great visual and community awareness activity for electric vehicles. But also things like the solar panels at the Anan's Lane site for additional outreach through the Greenheart Project. So the idea was to develop this process so to raise awareness that the trust is there and fund their follow-up project, but also to develop a conduit for community-generated ideas and projects that can be funded by the board through that. So that's something that we'll, of course, continue to discuss with the board going forward and what that might look like and how we can act on that recommendation with the board's guidance. And there is a next steps section. I didn't have a specific slide on that because it just is sort of a general how they're going to be taking these recommendations forward. And as I've said, we'll be working with them internally, creating part of our multi-polluted strategy for air quality throughout the city. But we'll also be taking those forward and already begun discussing them with our peers throughout Metro Government, with US EPA and some other of our stakeholder organizations as they were part of this process. It really does show those breadth of recommendations that came out of this process that there is something to be done at all levels of our community to support and improve air quality, whether that's governmental policy, individual company action, individual personal actions. Those can all, there's a place for everything in this strategy. So when you are looking at the report, the appendices do include all of our participating organizations, all of the recommendations, and then indicated the stakeholder priorities. And then finally, we included all the feedback received through that survey. So folks can see what our stakeholders thought as they reviewed those different recommendations. And with that, if the board has any questions for me, I'm happy to discuss. I think we also may have a few of our MPSG team on the call. So if a question comes in for them, I know they can raise their hand and also use the chat.
Michelle, okay. I just want to thank you for your leadership on this stakeholders group. You and I, we had talked properly likes Mayor Jill. And when you told me about your plans at the time, and I think I mentioned to you, that's a very aggressive schedule. And so when I read your report with all these over 90 recommendations, well, you guys did an excellent job. And I'd also like to thank the two board members, Dr. Coburn and Steve Sullivan, for being part of that stakeholder. You guys did an excellent job. And I would like to probably sit down with you sometime in the future. I have some questions on some of these recommendations.
I would love that. That was fantastic.
When does the report go to Metro Government as a whole?
It has actually already been passed along. I have presented elements of this report and the recommendations to the Louisville Forward team, which Louisville Forward is the division of Metro Government that includes economic development as well as developed Louisville. So that's our land use planning groups, our sustainability groups, codes and regulations. So that large sector has already had a presentation on this. And Keith has been talking to the Louisville leadership team, and that's the mayor and that level of chiefs and the deputy mayor. And so they are aware of this report. And one of our next steps will be to go through and specifically pull out those recommendations for the different parts of Metro Government that are relevant to their work. We want to be able to really point them with a bright line directly to those recommendations where we need for them to pick those up and carry them forward.
Are there any questions from any other board members or Mrs. Hampton? Or do we have any questions from the public regarding this?
Chairman Hilton, before you begin, I wanted to let you know that Heather Allen has joined the meeting as well. She too is having some difficulties with her camera.
Okay, thank you.
I had a thought in regards to environmental equity and justice and the trust fund that the board, the district has. Is there a way to initiate or focus on fundraising that drives environmental justice projects that can be facilitated through the trust fund?
I would definitely welcome Rachel to speak specifically to the trust fund and what statutory uses it has. But I think the answer is generally yes. And that would certainly be stakeholders' thoughts on by raising awareness of the fact that there is an air quality trust fund and opening up an RFE-type process where the community can submit their ideas on what they'd like to see that used for, that that would drive a more crowdsourced understanding of what would our community like to see. And I think that environmental justice projects would probably hold a lot of weight. And ultimately, it would be the board's decision on what projects to fund.
And I was almost thinking, and it's that the trust fund will be giving grant opportunities and funding opportunities as opposed to soliciting. and funding opportunities as opposed to soliciting from the public? You know, that, I don't know if it's been done before with the fund and I'll just throw it out there.
Mr. Sullivan, this is Rachel Hamilton and thank you for the opportunity to provide just some brief information about how the trust fund is funded. It's not funded through civil properties, but it also can't be funded through board solicited funds. I can provide you with some additional information on that funding opportunity at a next board meeting. Ms. Dodd, if there's anything we need to clarify on that, I've already moved to this question previously.
Okay, you get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I do have a question. Are there other, what other organizations are we trying to disseminate this report to?
Well, we have shared through our EPA teams because we're looking for ways that they can support us in implementation on this. And that this is actually part of a step in the process of a multi-pollutant air quality strategy that we've been discussing and working with EPA headquarters staff for. Of course, we've shared it with our regional staff as well. We'll be sharing this with our peer air quality agencies as well, so kind of that broader awareness of what's going on here locally, which of course, we've shared with all of the stakeholders. This has gone back out to the entire stakeholder group. So all of those organizations that were participants there, they also have this report in hand. We are, we will be sharing this with KIFDA, the local multi-pollutant, or excuse me, metropolitan planning organization, a different entity, that's the NPO. They were part of this, but we'll be sharing some specific recommendations that we think they can help us forward, particularly in that mobile source sector. And with University of Louisville, for example, of the Enviro Institute, they were participants throughout this process, particularly active in the health committee. But there are some recommendations in here that would be, that are research oriented or certainly our public health department as well, because there's several that are more about understanding health impacts and using health data to drive some decisions. And if any of the board has other suggestions for specific contacts that we should reach out to directly with this report, we really, we want to get this out as widely as possible. I do understand it's a large body of work, so just sending someone and saying there's a recommendation in there somewhere for you is not as helpful. So as much as possible, what we'll be trying to do is digest this a little bit, highlight those areas of specific relevance to different organizations' work. I appreciate the board's time today.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Michelle, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Among the recommendations, several of them call for certain actions by APCD, others by the Louisville Metro Government. But for those addressed to APCD, does the district plan to report back to the board their planned actions or progress on these recommendations or some sort of response to that, to the recommendations at a future board meeting?
Yeah, I think that the board meeting is a great way for us to keep not only the board, but the public apprised of our implementation of these recommendations and how we're moving forward. So I think that's a fantastic process step for us. I look to Keith and Rachel and see if they agree, but certainly that these board meetings are really valuable, both the board involved in our work as well as an opportunity for us to get information out to the public at large. So that's an excellent next step.
So then we could expect it here from the district, say by the end of the year, some sort of response?
I think so. There's, you'll see in the report, particularly in the next steps page or section, there's already a few things that we've been able to work on. In large part, that's because many of the recommendations, at least a handful, if not more, are recommendations for us to continue to do or expand efforts that are already ongoing or to point existing efforts towards other specific audiences, for example, in our outreach and education committee. So we are absolutely already starting to move on that. And I think, you know, is update back to the board by the end of the year with some of that is a great idea. And I imagine that Director Tally and reports can also bring little smaller chunks of information to your all's attention as we move through additional recommendations and implementation. So I think that's a great idea and we'll definitely put that in our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Colbert, Michelle is absolutely right and this really is just, the only way we can ask for your help and your input is if we bring this before you. So that is absolutely our intent to bring this before the board, let you know what we're working on so that you have the opportunity to help us do it better. So you should start to see these things come as they come up before the board over the next few meetings.
Great, thanks. Good to hear that.
Vice Chairman Sullivan and Director Tally. Chairman Hilton just called me to let me know that he has lost his connection and is having difficulty reconnecting. Steve, he's asked that you take over the meeting at this point.
Can you hear me? So is there any related to the multi-pollutant stakeholder group report? Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate it. I don't have an agenda in front of me. I think the next maybe went to, back to Keith, Director Tally, do you have, continue your report?
That concludes my report unless, of course, there's any questions or comments from the board about the report that I provided.
Any questions from the board on Director Tally's report?
No.
Okay. And then what's the next agenda item?
We have the reports, the reports that were distributed.
Air quality. Maybe I can find it. Hold on, bear with me. So do we have comments on the air quality report? I have one. It looks like the impact of the COVID-19 was short-lived at best. And the only real decrease was May for PM 2.5 in regards to the last five or seven years. Is that accurate, that effectively was very short-lived, effectively nonexistent?
Mr. Sullivan, I think I could paraphrase and we may look for Billy or Brian Harris to pull up in the conversation. Was very short-lived, but there is a lot of difficulty in teasing apart the impact of May's weather, which was also very favorable for low pollution, but what we may have seen with respect to COVID-19, that is due to the fact that unlike places like Mumbai or Wuhan, China, our quality is so low to be, our PM levels are so low to begin with that when we see a, the statistical signal is difficult to pull apart.
So it's kind of, in essence, goodness, that they generally are quite, impact be hard to appreciate or measure or quantify, right? In essence?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the air quality data? How about the environmental status report? Or the excess emission report?
No.
Or the compliant investigation status summary?
No.
So hearing no other quest, any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
This is a meeting.
By me.
Okay. And with that, this meeting stands adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.